Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Lakewood Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May 1st. Mr. Ferrell, please. Row.
Sharon Wallace. Ellen Talbot.
President.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Mark Air. Lynn Larson.
Present.
Philip Combs.
Present.
Robert Estrada.
Present.
You have Quorum.
Thank you. You all have taken a look at the meeting minutes from last time. If you have any questions or comments or... Hearing, not hearing any? I'll ask for a motion, please. Ms. Wallace motioned.
Second.
And Mr. Lindholm, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have any updates, Ms. Spear?
To the agenda, no, sir.
Okay. And we have no public comment this evening? And nobody signed in?
Correct.
Either way?
Correct.
And we have no public hearings? And we have no unfinished business? We want to get out of here real quick. And but on the new business, we have that 540-page comp plan that you all took a look at and called last night before you all went to bed. And so we asked Ms. Spear to please comment in 25 words or less.
Happy to do so, sir. So I will walk through the presentation, but as the Chair just mentioned, this packet is pretty much in its entirety, after the minutes, it is in its entirety, things related to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review. This is the start of the official legislative review schedule, even though you guys have talked about this a number of times. So thank you for your perseverance through all of that, particularly those of you that have been doing this with me since September of '22. But what you see here is the cover sheet to the attachments, which is the substance of the packet. And at the top, you saw that it was the draft 24 Comprehensive Plan, and then there was an audit table that immediately followed that. Then there's the draft critical areas ordinance. Following that was the first version of the audit table that's been slightly updated since because the Department of Commerce updated the form. So you will be getting an updated version. Not to say there's a lot of changes from what you may have looked at already, but we'll just have a new version of the form. Then there is the changes to the Station District Subarea Plan to reflect some changes in actual development on the ground since the plan was adopted. And then finally, there is the draft Silicon Woodbrook Subarea Plan, which is replacing the 2011 Silicon Plan. So that was in the packet for this evening. What we're going to do, though, is really focus on the comp plan itself and its policy edits, looking at the Station District Subarea Goals, looking at the changes to the Station District, and then, time permitted, we can talk about critical areas if you would like. But just a heads up, that next meeting will be really focused on the regulations. So in addition to CAO, there will be other development regulations that are needing to change based on what's happening with the plan. So hopefully, that all made sense to you. I will now share my screen. All right. So here we are. This is a process, and I know many of you have, if not all of you, have heard this from me before, but please allow me to walk through this again for purposes of the public record. We are in the process of a 10-year periodic review and potential update to the City of Lakewood's Comprehensive Plan. It's required under the Growth Management Act to happen every 10 years. So the current review must be done by the end of 2024. And then, following this review, there will be future reviews required again every decade. They are now at the state level requiring cities to also do a, quote, "implementation progress report" at the five-year mark. So we're getting done with the 10-year adoption of changes, and then in five years, Lakewood will need to submit now to the Department of Commerce progress on key outcomes. And then another five years, you have your next plan, and then five years after that is the report. So that's the idea as of this point. Why does this have to happen? In order to maintain consistency with state law and regional and countywide policy. But if you want to ask what the teeth is, if Lakewood, for whatever reason, didn't want to make these changes, it would ultimately result in potentially legal challenge to the city, but also losing the ability to apply for grants and loans through particularly the Puget Sound Regional Council regarding transportation projects. So tonight, as I just mentioned, going through the comp plan itself, the subarea plan and the other, excuse me, the Station District Subarea Plan, and then the Silicon Woodbrook Plan, and then time permitting, we can talk about critical areas as you would like. In two weeks at this point is the development regulations, a little more focus on transportation and parking information, and then the supplemental environmental impact statement, which covers, again, the breadth of all of the scope of the changes being considered. It does, however, have a focus on the transportation and parking impacts that the Commission has considered up to this point already, related to the new middle housing and accessory dwelling unit density in single-family areas. And also, there will be some discussion in that with regard to the downtown subareas transportation mitigation fee program, which we also talked about, and its success, or at least progress to date for implementation. Related to that, on the night where you have your joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting on May 13th, they will also actually, that night, hear from me about the biennial reviews that have been conducted by our consultants on the two subareas, downtown and Station District. So you may want to hang around and hear that or watch it after the fact as well. We will talk about those in relation to the comp plan, though, on the 15th of May as well. So process-wise, in a graphic format, we're about halfway through in terms of the legislative steps. At the beginning of 2022, there was a work plan, or, excuse me, of '23, there was a work plan formally adopted by council. There's been community engagement ongoing for the last year and a half. There's been partnerships with the county, with adjacent cities, with tribes, with utilities, and other public service agencies, as well as the community at large. The review is both the Comprehensive Plan as well as development regulations. The SEPA review, that Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement, is also underway, and we'll talk about it at the next meeting. Staff reports have been provided to you, and will, again, be provided as we move forward into public hearings. Your public hearing is scheduled for June 5th. So either two or three meetings from now, we'll talk about that later this evening. And the idea there is people can come and testify on anything across the board. So the entire Comprehensive Plan is open for comment and reaction, as is all of the development regulations in front of you as part of this process. Then there will also perhaps be comments about the subarea plan for Silicon Woodbrook, or potentially either of the other two as well. At that point, we will also be submitting draft versions of everything to Department of Commerce, as well as Puget Sound Regional Council, both of whom need to review this before council takes final action and provide feedback back to the city. And then, moving forward beyond what you will be doing at the Commission level, it will head over to the City Council for a similar process. So multiple study sessions, public hearing, and then continued consideration until they take action. Again, the deadline for the city to take action is the end of the year.
Well, excuse me?
Yes.
So we will have a public hearing on June 15th?
June 5th.
June 5th. Then we will consider the proposed or our own proposed changes, or changes from the public, and then vote on it maybe the two meetings later, and then send it to the council?
The way the schedule is set right now, Mr. Chair, is the hearing is on the 5th. And then, if you remember, because of Juneteenth, we rescheduled for a special night because that day is, the City Hall is closed. So June 12th, the following week, you have a study session where you would be reacting to anything you may have heard from the discussion tonight, plus the 15th, plus the public hearing comments, and then also if there's any amendments that you, as commissioners, want to propose. If you're ready by the end of that conversation on June 12th to do so, you could take action on amendments and the full package the following meeting, which is another special date, June 26th. If, however, as we move through this whole process, you feel you need more time, you have full discretion to do that, and we would just let the council know. But if you're ready to take action on June 26th, then yes, it moves on to council July 8th, and then they do a similar process. Their public hearing is scheduled for August 5th, and their final action date is September 3rd as of this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. So this is kind of what we just talked about, but these are the milestone dates between now and when action is happening for City Council. And what we are doing in our recommendations, both to you and then to the council, is that rather than the usual process where council adopts an ordinance and it's in effect either five days later or 30 days later, we are recommending, if they do take action in September, to actually postpone the effective date to January 1st of '25. Because of the breadth and depth, both of the amendments here, staff is going to need time to transition and get ready for these new rules, the internal administration of new forms, setting up online processes to be able to handle the middle housing and the accessory dwelling unit, things that may be coming. So rather than a five-day or a 30-day effective date, we're going to be suggesting January 1st of 2025. So the public engagement, some of which has happened here at the Planning Commission, we've had going since, again, fall of '22. There's been two different websites up and live. There've been social media and the Connections Magazine newsletter articles. There's been an electronic newsletter that people have been able to sign up for. We have about 140 subscribers as to that right now. And there are, there have been three citywide direct mailings about this update, and another one was mailed today. So everybody in the city will get one more that talks about the schedule we just went through. So should they want to engage, they'll have links to the site, as well as information about the public hearings. There was a citizen committee in 2023 that looked specifically at the housing changes, as well as energy and climate change. Then there was another steering committee formed last fall to do the overview of the draft plan itself, that's now in front of you. And there was a separate, smaller committee that looked specifically at the Silicon Woodbrook Subarea Plan. So these two groups were meeting concurrently, and they did meet jointly a couple of times, but they had slightly different focuses for their work. There's been four open houses, and as you are well aware, there's been over 20 Planning Commission meetings where some portion of this process has been discussed, and it has also been in front of the City Council over 10 times at this point. All of the recordings of those meetings and all of the materials from those meetings are available at the link you see on this presentation slide, which is essentially the City of Lakewood's page slash 24 periodic review slash. And so if anyone wants to take a look at any of those other recordings, the past meeting materials, that's all accessible there. Speaking of the two websites, it's the periodic review page, and then the other one is called LakewoodWashspeaks.org. And that is where actually people can go and submit public comment if they are unable to attend or participate in, for some reason, either the Commission or the council's public hearing. They can send in things through that website at any time, and it'll be considered part of the public record up and through July 31st, because the City Council's hearing is scheduled for August 5th. A number of partners have been engaged in this with the city since, again, that started in '22, the Nisqually and Puyallup tribes both. The City of Lakewood does not own its water, power, or sewer utilities, and so those respective third-party agencies have been engaged throughout. Also, discussions with the special districts of the Library District and the Fire District, education partners K-12, as well as colleges in the city, the transit agencies, WashDOT, the Health Department, DSHS, and Puget Sound Regional Council has engaged, and then other government partners, JBLM and Camp Murray, Pierce County, and then adjacent cities, Silicon University Place and Tacoma. And we've also worked voluntarily with Commerce, Ecology, and Fish and Wildlife at the state level to give us early feedback on our draft. And then, of course, we've also been working with residents, CBOs, our community-based organizations, and cultural contacts, and then business and environmental contacts as well. So starting in, some of the things that we've actually needed to gather from these outside entities, and we are doing our best to do this, we're about 80% done with this process, but gathering information about capital facilities, so their infrastructure that's either in place or is planned over the 20-year horizon for the Comprehensive Plan, water, sewer, stormwater, schools, parks, police and fire, transportation systems, and then utilities. And as part of the state law, we need to collect the information from those outside agencies and incorporate it into the plan for the public to be able to access. In transportation land, we have to describe how we have intergovernmental coordination in forming this project. So again, working with WashDOT, as well as Sound Transit, Pierce Transit, and the, again, those three jurisdictions around us where our roads cross city boundaries into the county or into another city. Looking at the amount of parking that local governments can require, those are some changes that we've talked about before, we'll talk about again, but that's now related to recent state law changes. And then talking about transportation demand strategies is something that Lakewood is large enough of a city to where it is required to do transportation demand management. So if you break that down and think about what that name means, essentially trying to bend the public's appetite from single occupancy vehicles to more use of transit or non-auto transportation options, obviously, that's extremely complicated, and obviously, there's a lot of reasons why people move about as they do. But this is something that the city is required to plan for and try to encourage use of options other than single occupancy vehicles. Coming back to utilities, again, looking at location and capacity of existing and proposed utilities, and then also financing for the maintenance of existing infrastructure, as well as plans for any needed expansion. Department of Commerce, I mentioned this a little bit before, but essentially, we have to let them know 60 days prior to full adoption what our draft is, and so I will be doing that here in the near future. And then, once the council takes action, presumably in September at this point, they will get another version to take a look at. Because this is a 10-year review and they need to do so, they will reply back to us before December 31st, having looked at that adopted version, and let us know if there's anything that they see where council may need to go back in and tweak. So council will take action, and then Commerce may respond back, or just tell us, "Thank you very much, job accomplished." Puget Sound Regional Council, they take a look specifically at transportation-related things to certify that our Comprehensive Plan will be consistent with GMA, as well as regional transportation planning. So you see the focus areas. They'll look at whether it's consistent land use assumptions and travel forecasts, whether it's consistent with the regional transportation plan, and whether it's also consistent in transportation land with the city's growth targets regarding housing and jobs, as well as climate change and air quality concerns that are now part of our regional planning policies. And then, as I mentioned before, there are several other state agencies, as well as ICLE, that the city has been working with voluntarily. So when you start to look at the transportation element and also the critical areas ordinance, know that those two agencies, WashDOT and Fish and Wildlife respectively, have seen them and provided input. And also, ICLE, if you remember our failed attempt to have that live presentation a few meetings ago, they also provided feedback. And just to let you know, we are still expecting a recording of what she had intended to say, and I will forward that as soon as I get it. Any questions on all of that procedural background? Okay. So I guess the other thing I would say to all of you, as you embark into this, some of you for the first time, you are the linchpin in the process, and I think council would tell you that if you were to ask them, because you are the first level of public feedback on the drafts. You are subject matter experts with everything that you bring to the chair you're sitting in right now. And so as you're looking at these documents, if you have questions and need clarification, or if you have changes you want to suggest, that is part of what the council would hope you would provide, either in the draft to them, or as findings of fact, recommendations of what you would like more information about, or, "In addition to what you're doing here with this comp plan, we also suggest the city does X, Y, or Z." So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, that you are hearing from the public, you're looking at these documents, and preparing the next level of recommendation up to council. They want to hear more than just from staff on this stuff, they want to hear from you. So hopefully, there'll be some active conversation amongst yourselves before you take your action.
And I can piggyback on that.
Sure.
At the meeting where the council discussed the RTA and decided not to take any actions, and it back to us, the comment from the council was that they relied a heck of a lot on the opinions, recommendations, and the actions from the Planning Commission before they would take any action. And they were kind of surprised that we didn't get as much feedback on that RTA as they did, which brought mine, which we brought up, that they need to have more communication, which they intend to do so. It will come back to us, but as was indicated by Ms. Spear, not in the very near future. But that's going to be a while, because we've got all this comp plan to go through first, and that'll be after all that.
Yeah.
Down the road, down the road.
Yeah. So just to step back, what is a Comprehensive Plan? This is a 20-year document that looks at vision for the city, and not only talks about housing, which is what we talked a lot about this year in this process, but also economic development, public safety, parks, the history of the city and how to preserve it. So it's a wide range of information that's incorporated into the Comprehensive Plan, hence its name. And it also is not only looking at right now, but it's also looking into the future. It's a 20-year document, as I said. The consistency we've talked about required to state and regional and countywide policies and laws. It reflects the community's vision, and this goes back to even when the council adopted its first Comprehensive Plan in 2000. The city incorporated in '96, it had its couple of years of kind of starting up all of the wheels of progress as a city. And so in 2000, the first comp plan was adopted, and before that, there was a community-wide process to create a vision for the city. And so we're now at the point of saying, "Okay, 26, 27 years later, how are we doing on this?" The City Council now has its vision that it's adopted for 30 years after incorporation, i.e., 2026, and that's part of what's in our comp plan now. And then it's also, as a document, intended to maximize health, safety, and economic well-being, as well as working on the attractiveness of the city to those outside who may want to move here or work here in the future. Community values that were, again, voiced originally when incorporation first happened, being friendly and welcoming, high-quality public services, educational systems, parks and facilities, recognizing and celebrating the unique places in Lakewood, increasing the local economy's strength, and also sustainable and responsible practices. And this is everything from how public services are delivered to, again, infrastructure, to how development is permitted. So this is the vision statement that I just mentioned at its 30-year anniversary. I won't read it verbatim, but it's there in front of you. It tries to cover all of the things that either, right now, Lakewood has already celebrated for, or things it's working to improve since incorporation, and also anticipating into the future what will make Lakewood succeed as it continues to age and mature as a jurisdiction. In terms of land use, this is as of right now. You'll see, this is the zoning map. So, actually, no, I'm sorry, this is the future land use map, but it shows you the types of land uses and the various, quote, "zones." About half of the city is in yellow, and those are the residential areas. Parks and open space are the dark green, that's about 20%, a little over 20% of the city. Commercial, business zones, a little over 7%. Downtown is in red, right in the middle, that's the urban center we're all sitting in right now. Industrial zones are the gray, there's a couple of different shades of gray, primarily on the eastern side of the city, so just to the east of the downtown, but also further south in Spring Brook and Woodbrook. Public institutional is the blue, the dark, bright blue, and that's, for instance, Western State, Pierce College, St. Clair Hospital, Clover Park, some of the other public school campuses. And then military-related, if you were to look on the far eastern side of the city, those two shades of blue, that's the air corridors we've talked about before. And then there's just a small piece down in Woodbrook of that, I won't call it olive green, it's kind of the top-right corner of that shape, that is actually owned by JBLM, but it's within city borders.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Go back, please. So that controversial piece of property that they've been speaking about for quite a while, there, on Edgewood, on Silicon Lake, what's that called? Mr.?
You're talking about the Edgewater Park residential?
Edgewater Park? Yes.
The...
I don't mean for the guys.
I'm sorry. Well, Edgewater Park, is that listed as a park or open space on this map?
It would be, yes, because it is an existing park. Yes.
But it's not.
It's not labeled on this map, but it would be one of the green areas, because it's an existing park.
Okay.
I apologize, we don't have the labels on this one. So the scope, we've talked about this before, but just for purposes of the record, we are looking at both the Comprehensive Plan and the related development regulations per the Growth Management Act and related Washington Administrative Code sections. We're looking at the region-wide planning policies and the regional growth strategy, so that's where our 2044 growth targets for housing and jobs comes from. We're looking at optional elements, so the three subarea plans in Lakewood, downtown Station District and Silicon Neighborhood, being replaced with Silicon Woodbrook. And then also the 2021 energy and climate change element, which is now going to go through a little bit of a metamorphosis to meet the new requirements that were adopted this year by the state legislature. And then the other things that'll probably take some time during your public hearing and discussion, but certainly will at council level, is, we talked about this last year, but whether in the accessory dwelling units, short-term rentals should be allowed, and if so, what type of regulation would be required of them. Looking at parking policies in those single-family areas, and, again, the downtown transportation mitigation fee. These are the lists of the checklist and audit documents that you have, at least part of at this point. So on the left-hand side, you'll see all the areas where the city had to verify against law and policy that we were consistent, or whether we needed to make updates. And then the development regulations on the right-hand side, these were all the different parts of Lakewood's municipal code that needed review to verify whether they are also consistent with state law. The housing and employment growth targets, again, to touch base on some recent changes, because since the GMA was put in place, essentially, cities had to plan for housing and job growth. But this time around, in this 10-year process, this is new and more specific information the city has to absorb and plan for. The top table there shows you in the second or third column, the 2020 estimated population, I'm sorry, sorry, the 20 estimated housing units, so think 2.2, 2.3, like that, to get to your population. And then the 44 allocation are the additional units on top of what you see in 2020 that the city needs to allow and plan for in its regulations and its zoning. So overall, the city has about 27,000 units as of 2020, and looking to add another 9,378 in the next 20 years. Once again, housing unit doesn't necessarily mean single-family detached, that could be anything from that to an apartment building, to a tiny house, to an ADU, et cetera. We now also have to do this planning for the various economic levels that you see broken out on that top table as well. So anything from 0 to 30 of area median income, those needing significant assistance, up to beyond 120% of the area median income. And then in addition to that, the emergency units that need to be planned for in the city. The lower table shows you how the citywide targets are being subdivided among the downtown and the Station District Subarea compared to the rest of the city. So that first line, the housing units, again, that same number, 9378. In the downtown, the target is for 2,257 new units of housing. In Station District, 1,772, which leaves a remaining about 53... In station district, 1,772, which leaves a remaining about 5350, 5,350 units in the rest of the city over time. And then again, the 574 emergency housing units where those are uh allowed to be built in the city. Same concept here for jobs. So about 9,863 new jobs are uh net new jobs are the target. In the downtown, it's a very large percentage. It's 74% of the new jobs were targeted in the downtown. And so as a remainder, there's about 26% left, and that's divided between the station district and the rest of the city. So any questions on the housing allocations by economic segment or how things are being geographically identified for parts of the subareas or citywide?
I have a question. The uh uh subarea that is the Lakewood Station Plan. Uh, I brought it before and I didn't know where to uh to insert this thought. But uh the Springbrook area uh in, to my view, has so many similarities with the Lakewood Station area that they should be combined in the Lakewood Station Zone. Uh, with the uh connection by roadway with 47th Street now directly across the Lakewood Station and the frequency of uh public transit that is in high demand in Springbrook to get elsewhere in the city and especially to the Lakewood Station. Uh, the land uses, the densities, the what we want to have happen near transit uh is a commonality between the two zones and places. And it seems to me uh just good, good planning to to have it be comprehensively uh uh connected. Uh, and then a second thought uh is uh up on 82nd Street and South Comway. Uh, the zoning changes partway between um that street and uh Durango. And with two separate zones. And and when you look at it, if it were all the same zone, the higher density of multiple-use industrial and commercial zone, uh, then it would be easier to administer and also would be easier for businesses to locate there. So the those are two ideas, but I don't know where the appropriate place in this um process is, but.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Um, so Mr. Larson, the the way that I would recommend uh bringing both of those up and into the formal process is when you're ready to do your recommendations to city council, you would recommend that the uh Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan be expanded to incorporate Springbrook. Um, and so that could be um a finding of fact, or it could be a recommendation that would go up to them. And then in terms of the zoning change, when you are taking action to adopt, part of what you're going to be looking at is zoning. So you could um propose an amendment that would say these parcels or this section of the city gets rezoned to X. And then the commission would talk about that and make a recommendation.
Thank you. I I wasn't putting words in anybody else's uh braids is to with this idea because it's really the first time I've mentioned it to everybody, but uh had to start somewhere, I guess.
You added some, I'll add words to to his. It's very similar to Tillicum and Woodbrook, that same analogy. As because they're physically separated also, but with the same core, basically. So I think that's what I would agree with Mr. Larson there. Mr. Coles?
My comment is actually associated with that one. Um, and currently is Tillicum and Woodbrook part of one neighborhood plan? I thought Tillicum had its own neighborhood plan.
No, the 2011 plan is strictly Tillicum. What's being proposed this year is to incorporate Woodbrook as well.
And my my recommendation would be, and I know I'll make this formally later, is to not have them combined. And the reason why is not because there isn't an access between them, but the access isn't very tenable. And the uses are so conflicting. They're two conflicting uses. One's all um industrial with a focus on industrial future growth. And the other one is a neighborhood. And the those two don't align up typically unless you have a whole master plan for them. And because they're geographically divided by uh an interstate, I don't ever see that actually connecting properly. So I think they're conflicting uses, whereas you know, Springbrook may with the housing and the housing might be more aligned. I I I wouldn't speak to that one, but I I don't, I don't think um the interests are aligned in those two neighborhoods. Um, I can see why they would get lumped in just because they're um awkward and close, but unfortunately, they don't fit in my mind.
Something to consider.
Yeah, something to consider.
Wallace.
Well, I was just gonna say that I would agree with that, your your sentiment. I I I think that both your sets of comments are are pretty accurate.
Thank you. In case we forget, we we won't, but in case we forget, do bring this up again.
Bring it up again. Yes, yes. All right. So uh this is the current land use map for the city, and it's similar to what you were just looking at, but um I'll go over it one more time. So each of the colors designates a certain type of land use and density within it. So you'll see here two different shades of yellow. These are both residential areas, but the lighter yellow is has historically been lower density because of the environmental sensitivity around the lakes, as well as uh just historical development patterns. The darker yellow is where we've got the R3 and the R4 zones primarily right now in the city. Again, single-family for the most part. The green is the parks, the blue is public institutional, red is downtown, pink is station district primarily. This uh striped area is the current Tillicum Plan. Uh, and then again, we have that uh kind of odd area over on the right affected by Joint Base Lewis McCord in the air corridor, one and two zones. Middle housing, we've talked about before, but to summarize it once again, what does it mean? Anything from duplexes up through sixplexes, but also townhouses, stacked flats, apartments, and cottage housing. And under new state law, it is required in those single-family areas we were just looking at in yellow that the city needs to allow at least two middle housing units per lot in single-family areas. If they are within a quarter mile of a major transit stop, it's up to four units per lot. Or if there is an affordable unit uh proposed, then that density also goes up. And affordable meaning um it's not been formally defined yet, but big, big grain of salt, 80% are below a very immediate income or or some other level that the city might adopt. But the idea there is if it's if it's below market rate, then you would go up in density. And then if there is actually areas in the city, and there's a few left where there is no sewer, then it remains at the two-unit-per-lot maximum. In terms of accessory dwelling units, again, the city is required to allow things and both for middle housing and for accessory dwelling units to make it very clear, these are not um regulations that are requiring property owners to do anything. This is action required by the city to adopt these new rules, allowing property owners to make choices. And so the minimums that I'm talking about and the types of development, that is options available to property owners once this goes in place. And it is up to them over time how much of this actually gets built. It's not the city saying you have to do this. And it's not the city saying we're going to come in and do this. I just want to get that on the record as well. But these are the different kind of um ideas out there right now about accessory dwelling units. You'll see in the graphics on the right, you've got one in an attic as well as one in the basement. The second one, it's an attached to the primary residence. And the third version, it's a it's a standalone building. And then in the law that just passed, it can be a combination of these, depending on how many are allowed per lot. And one thing to note as well, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and multifamily can have ADUs on their lot as well. So there's, this is quite um a big change in terms of Lakewood's single-family development over time. And should people decide to start to do this, there will be change to neighborhoods over time as a result.
And Miss Spear, if I remember correctly, then parking is not a requirement.
Um, I'll get to that in just a second. Um, see if I can jump to it for you real quick.
That's okay. We'll wait.
Okay.
Chair, one question.
Oh.
Miss Spear, is there any um data available on how many of these situations exist already that are just unsanctioned?
Are you talking about accessory dwelling units?
Yes.
Uh, we have a sense as of last November, there's about 150 uh short-term rentals, most of which I think all but one are in accessory dwelling units. I don't have off the top of my head how many of those might be unlicensed by the city um or unpermitted by the city. Uh, that is something we're setting up software now to start to be able to track.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so this is dun dun dun, the 24 draft map. And at first, it doesn't look any different, but it actually is. Okay. So again, we have the yellow being the residential, but you see now instead of this yellow where you had um R1, R2, R3, R4 with the lower density around the lakes and the higher density in the other parts of the city, now we have all the same color over in this area, including around the lakes. And this is all now areas where those middle housing and accessory dwelling units would be allowed in addition to the single-family homes currently on those lots. The restriction will happen when somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to do this. There will be individual um lot analysis and environmental review and um transportation and review if it's far enough away from transit. So each lot will have its own analysis when a property owner wants to try this. But in theory, all of these places in the city now, middle housing and accessory dwelling units could be built. And the lighter yellow is where you see the two units per lot in addition to the primary residence. The areas where you see these purple stars or the darker yellow behind them are those areas that are within a half mile, uh, excuse me, a quarter mile uh from the planned BRT route in this case from Pierce Transit. And then down in Tillicum, there's another spot because of the planned Sounder Station down there. So the darker yellow or the purple star areas, those are the places that could be going up to four units per lot in addition to the primary residence. And the theory, we've talked about this before, but the the theory is because of the proximity to transit, the people in those areas would be able to do something other than hop in a car to get where they need to go. They would be taking advantage of the transit system. Um, and at the same time, kind of on the other side of that coin, we're building the uh housing where we think transit will go in order to be able to maximize its use once it is built. Lakewood has, um, I've done this U-shaped uh discussion before, but this assumes a path for a bus rapid transit route that Pierce Transit is uh tentatively planning uh in Lakewood. The path hasn't been completely set. They need to still finalize that. And it is expected if it does get approved, maybe construction starts around 2030, and then it would take another seven to eight years to build. Down in Tillicum, again, the location itself is not uh specifically identified, but the idea there is that that uh Sounder Station is not intended to be finished until 2045, which is beyond the planning horizon of this comp plan. However, the state, the state is requiring the city to assume it will be there. So any questions on what this is looking like for you right now?
When is the Lakewood Station planning to be built? When is this supposed to be done? So if we know Tillicum's 2045, what about the Lakewood?
That's the one that's there right now. Yeah, yeah, that that was the the kind of impetus for that subarea plan was the fact that that station got finished. And what you're now seeing just north of that actually is a consolidation of lots and about 250 uh housing units being built right now with an additional 300 to 400 planned uh nearby to transit. So this could work just like.
And do folks have a way of looking up their address or an address of interest and seeing where they fall on this map?
Like if someone has a parcel number or an address and they want to see where they are. Uh, we're not quite to that point. This is a very high-level map. Eventually, it will be something that you can hone into specific parcels. Yes.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Talbot?
Could he, could I ask about um? Okay, the air corridor, I noticed uh changed from like to a dark and a light color to now just one color. But what does that mean for residential that would be residential use that would be permitted there? Because um I believe that there are residents, there are, there is residential housing there right now, right? So what does that mean for going forward? What is permitted there in the future?
Yeah, so first of all, Ms. Talbot, the the map here is the land use designation. The other map is a zoning map. So there's actually these two zones within the single designation. Um, so it is confusing because they have the same name, and I I don't know who named these to begin with, but here we sit with an air corridor designation and then air corridor zone one and two. But having said that, uh, to answer your question directly, any residential use in this entire area of the city is non-conforming right now. And the idea is that eventually, when those are no longer habitable, they will not be rebuilt and the residential uses will go away. And it will become a commercial industrial area, which is the type of uh people-per-acre calculation considered safe per Department of Defense and FAA requirements. So yes, there's people living there, and right now there's about 832 units uh at last calculation, some of which are in lower-income uh mobile home parks or manufactured home parks. Some are single-family. But the idea is it's not safe to have them there. The city has zoned as a result to say they're non-conforming. We're not forcing anybody to move. They're able to stay there, but the idea is to purposely, they're not going to be expanding those footprints of those housing units, and they're not going to be um improving them to keep them there long term.
Okay, so does that mean that ADUs are are not permitted?
Correct, because they're considered non-conforming uses in the air corridor. So yeah, those ADUs would not be there. They would be over in the the residential part.
Okay, and then the the um cor- corridor commercial along South Comway.
It's right here.
Also has very few that I that I'm aware of, but at least like along 85th and kind of merging back into that neighborhood, there there's, there is some residential use there. Is there a thought about, well, backing out of that statement just a sec to um, it look, it appears that the corridor is also within the quarter-mile transit buffer. So my question is, what is the thought about um allowing for multifamily in that corridor? Um, particularly because even though we're trying to densify the 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 downtown, there still is a need for diversification of distributing um the housing needs across income levels. And so I just wonder what is the thought about incorporating, allowing multifamily use in that corridor?
I'm sorry, I don't have the development regulations in front of you tonight to be able to um point to something, but here I go to try to ramble and answer you. The um middle housing and ADU changes in the yellow parts of this uh map or the designations related specifically to residential uses are required by state law. The city otherwise can make choices on how it zones and designates land anywhere in the city, including the area you're talking about in corridor commercial. So as of right now, there are certain uses allowed in corridor commercial, and I honestly can't remember if there's multifamily allowed in that or not. Uh, I doubt there's single-family allowed in that. But the planning commission can certainly recommend in it, whether it's corridor, commercial, or or any of the other zones, a change in the allowed uses or um looking at the number of housing units per acre or lot, however it's calculated in each zone, if you want to make changes there. Um, as of now, though, that part of the city's zoning and allowed uses is not proposed for change. So if you want to pursue that, then that's something the planning commission can talk about and maybe make a recommendation.
Mr. Hurd?
Miss Spear, just listening to what you were saying just now, just spurred this question for me. From the last time the comp plan was evaluated to now, presumably there have been lessons learned and data and knowledge collected, questions come up over that time period. Is there a collection of that knowledge of those questions and and those lessons learned? Is it already just applied in this plan that we're looking at now? Or is there an outstanding list of of requests or recommendations that are not included in the the draft version that we're seeing now? And if that is the case, can we see those those items?
Uh, in re, in terms of regulation of land uses, that happens on an annual basis. So uh this year, again, So uh, this year again, it's an odd duck. So those of you that are new aren't witnessing how it normally happens, which is we get requests from the public to maybe rezone a parcel or for some reason a policy change is requested. City Council might also do one of those things. There's this process. And then there's also uh, an annual review of all of the development regulations to see if they have the need for change because of a lesson learned with a particular project. Because um, new environmental constraints are found like what the city has talked about recently with uh, potentially I five overtopping because of Clover Creek. Um, so there can be a random reason why we need to affect a particular chapter of our code. That happens annually. So if you were to go back to twenty fifteen, the not, the last time this big process happened and compare the development regulations then to now, they are definitely different because of those annual reviews that have occurred. The zoning, the land use establishment, the changes that have happened since twenty fifteen are the sub-areas for the most part. Uh, and what we're talking about tonight is really the only sub-area change is that proposed expansion down to Tilakum to become Tilakum and Woodbrook. No other zoning changes are proposed right now, nor have they been uh, in recent years, other than from private developers or property owners wanting to do something. So hopefully I'm answering your question and trying to get there. The, the changes on the land use side are less than you would see in the regulations over time. The big stuff this time around is that state law, you will now allow more types of housing in single-family areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Combs.
Good question and, and just to piggyback on that, because this was something that has been on my mind as well. I, I know that you and the city staff have looked at this and thought, what about this or what about that and had some great ideas. Comp plans is a great time to include those in my mind, even though it's a big project and you're already doing, you know, four hundred pages or whatever. But once it's done, it's in there and it's in there and it maps it for a long time. So my question is, what are some of those opportunities that we feel like, you know, we should be chasing after that would really you know, bring some commercial activities, some growth, solve some of the housing issues, whatever it is. Uh, one of the things that I've kind of wondered over the years, last twenty years in particular is why, why don't we have more commercial activity or anything that touches the lakes? We are Lakewood, yet it's pretty much dead on the lakes, all private residents. And um, I'm not saying I want the lakes to become all commercial, but there's no hub of activity. And if you look around the region, water is embraced in commerce. There's, you know, anything from marinas, restaurants and and activity there. And so now the public has access to it and they can go in and create something uh, or do something and connect to the, the water and amenities we have. I'm curious, you know, something, can we do something like that or has that been considered? And are there other ideas that we could look at opportunities, kind of low-hanging fruit to? And I know you won't be able to solve that today or answer everything today, but I, I guess my thought would be, I would propose that we do look at that again and see if there's anything that are maybe the big picture ideas that would help shape uh, Lakewood for fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road that we have to start today in order to get there.
Um, let me take a stab at responding. Uh, first of all, again, Lakewood is a young city, meaning it did not say this is our border, which has a lot of unbuilt area in it. And when we zone it, there's stuff that, there's nothing there now, so we're going to choose what type of land use goes there. It was, this is already built out. We're going to find our boundaries and start to try to deal with the issues within our boundaries that have pre-existed in corporation. So the development you see around the lakes is historical. You've got um, the stuff that some of it is almost a hundred years older, older. Uh, this started out as a destination for the super-rich from the east coast. Uh, and so there was not the, the opportunity to say, how can we be strategic about our natural amenities uh, in the city for economic development purposes? Uh, having said that, I think the sub-areas actually reflect a lot of the, the city's focus on economic development. Uh, the downtown simply because there needs to be one for the city to be functioning as a city. And then the station district because there is access not only to the station itself there, but then you have I five, five twelve um, right there as well. So it's a very strategic um, freight corridor as well as transportation uh, corridor on the private side. If you want to try to find economic opportunity around water, maybe down in Tilakum would be a place for some bigger ideas, uh, simply because you do have a park right up to the water there and you also have um, some commercial down there. If you remember a few years ago, the restaurant uh, burned down and the family, I believe, is still figuring out what to do next with that property. And then, having said all of that, the, the Edgewater Park conversation that's ongoing with the city was mentioned earlier tonight. You have some very strong feelings um, from those who would like to access the lakes and those who live there now, uh, how those lakes should be accessed by the public. Uh, under state law, under the mindset of, of Washington State, the public should have access to the water bodies. Uh, but just the way Lakewood has historically developed, um, that isn't the case for most, if not all of the lakes besides maybe Wahop in the middle of uh, Fort Stilakum Park. So I, I think, Mr. Combs, there is the opportunity for the Planning Commission to say this is something the city should look at, like between now and the next, the five-year interim thing. I don't think we could, we could take that on in the legislative schedule we have right now, other than to say this is a finding of fact or a recommendation up to council as they take their, their look forward beyond uh, twenty twenty-four into the, the future. The comprehensive plan, by the way, does already say that the international districts, so kind of where Congressman Talbot was talking about, that commercial corridor area and also Springbrook are areas that have been identified for a future sub-area plan, uh, two, separate from each other. Um, meaning at one point the city identified those are areas that need a little more attention and a little more specificity in the way uh, planning happens there. There's no water there, but uh, there is the idea that um, additional planning will happen for those parts of the city. So I hope that answered your question a little bit, but um.
I, I, I know it's possible. I, I think, you know, when you're doing this, you, you know, the sub-area plan for sure can address it. You know, and that's one way of doing it. And I, I think that what you're talking about is great. And I don't even know that everyone would be on board with the idea of something like that, but all the other municipalities around us have embraced it. And so I think it would be, you know, worth even adding a phrase into it without going into a plan that the city would welcome some, you know, things that would enhance, you know, commercial activity or bring people to the water or, you know, whatever it is, whether it's um, you know, access for kayaks through, you know, you know, a restaurant wants to put it in, their condition is they have to create access for the public or something like that. City of Seattle does things like that. This is, I don't think we have to solve the whole thing today, but if we say that we're open to that or that we welcome some change, and it doesn't have to be just the lakes. I think the lakes is an obvious low-hanging fruit. It's one of our biggest amenities. It's clearly stated in the comp plan as one of the drivers for it. But there's other things that I think, other low-hanging fruit. And so if we just put it, put, put a nugget in there, then when someone comes in later and says, I've got, you know, you know, I've got this opportunity to do something near this park. And we've already said, hey, this is something that we're open to. They have something to attach to. Right now, it's like, oh, this is coming out of the blue. Why would we ever consider that? No, no, no. And, and so uh, it's finding the right balance too. You know, you don't want to change the identity of the, a whole um, city, but we kind of do want to enhance the identity. Every year get a little better than we were last year. And if we just do whatever is required by the state, we'll get, we'll get whatever the state gives us.
Sure. And so again, as I mentioned to Mr. Larson and Ms. Talbot, as you're going through your review process, if you want to add in a recommended policy or goal, you're welcome to do that in the language of the comp plan as well. You're certainly um, able to do that.
Mr. Wallace.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate your idea. I would just give you a heads up that there was a, an extra place that was on the lake and the city sold it to a private person because there was a lot of crime and um, in, in some of the areas where you're talking about. So it's, it has been thought of. And the other area of development that we've talked about uh, in the pink area, um, there are a lot of airplanes that go across that in that Southern Park region. And, and so there are some risks there. Um, just something to consider because there are a lot of planes that go over that area. Um.
There, there's a, a whole pathway of planes in an airport right on Lake Union with thousand, hundreds of thousands of people that live there. And I, my office used to be right there. That's why I say it. It, it's, it's not a, a new thing. It's
I, the reason I bring it up though is that commercial aviation is quite different than military aviation. They don't have bombs that can drop on people. So it's, it's somewhat frowned upon with the military to, to have a lot of development in their, their corridors. Um, so just something to think about.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not proposing anything.
No, no, I just, just that sometimes people, that just, just to kind of to, to bring that um, to consideration. I think sometimes we forget what they do and um,
Whenever we get to speaking on that subject, there's a lot of aspects to consider.
Yeah.
And they're all people to consider as they go along. Mr. Larson.
From an urban development standpoint, th- these lakes don't have critical mass. They don't have enough uh, mass to be able to uh, to, to be a hub the way the ones you're examining from, from example, and so you're giving examples of uh, in Seattle. And uh, uh, besides that, uh, the, the populace that lives around it and owns it doesn't leave any um, room to uh, to create commercial activities. And uh, besides that, it's a pretty substantial part of the voting public. And I think that uh, they would be quite alarmed at the idea. Uh, and uh, and that there'd be a lot of resistance and, and uh, stuff, but but the, I think the fundamental is the, the basics that would require a commercial activity on these lakes, uh, it's not, there's just plain not big enough. American Lake kinda is, but you gotta get that big before it, it works.
We, uh, something to be, to be, to be, to consider for future reference, but as we indicated, we're not going to solve anything tonight. So just ideas. Any comments from this, from this side? All right, Ms. Spear.
Okay. Uh, so this is tying back to what this is proposing in this designation map. This change to where all of this is considered residential and then the new name, I never mentioned this, but for that darker yellow area where the four units of middle housing or ADUs would be allowed uh, is residential transit because of its proximity to transit. Looking in then the specific zones, and then I'm sorry, the circles are a little bit off here, but uh, what's being proposed are three new zones, residential transit two, three and four. And then you also will see along the bottom here, either taking no action, meaning leaving things exactly the same, adding in this transit, um, sorry, not adding in the transit zones. You would have about a total of ten thousand two hundred and forty-two housing unit capacity, which is above what's required for our target. So we're all good there, even if we did nothing. But there's a whole lot of other things that the city has to now be dealing with this, this cycle. The rest of this in the green and then the difference on the right, this is where the proposed action is happening. And so what you have at the bottom, I'll just cut to the chase, is um, a roughly seven thousand unit increase because of in those areas that have been single-family up to this point, you can have two or in some cases up to four additional units on a lot. So again, the capacity is increasing significantly within the city where they are increasing. If you look at the the column all the way to the right, the largest increase is in what's currently the R three zone, almost twenty-six hundred new unit capacity. Uh, and then you'll also see down with uh, residential two, three and four. It's not a huge change, but there would be an additional capacity there of about five hundred and forty units. So what we're doing by adding in what is now required for middle housing and ADUs, no surprise here, I don't think, but this is capacity that wasn't anticipated up to this point in the city of Lakewood. Somewhat some, right here is where you see some of that um, uh, summarized for you. But again, just to reiterate, land capacity exists for the housing affordable to all economic segments. We have enough capacity identified as is. There's almost a seventy-four hundred and thirty unit increase in capacity. The utilities, um, in those parts of the city, the capacity demand will uh, in turn eventually need additional infrastructure capacity. So we are communicating all this information right now to all of the utilities and, and engaging, for instance, with Pierce County, they're about to do their next uh, fifty-year sewer plan for their entire sewer area, which includes much more than the city of Lakewood. Uh, the new zones, as I mentioned, and then uh, because of how, how capacity is currently identified in the city, no change to the number of housing units in downtown or station district is being proposed. Well, we're leaving the, the sub-areas alone in terms of their planning, but that it's the single-family areas where the most density is being added.
Ms. Spear.
Yes.
Go back please. So your first bullet, sufficient land capacity exists for housing. That seems a little contrary to what we've been saying. There's not much land available uh, in, in, in Lakewood and only, only thing we can do is build up basically because we don't can't do many uh, individual housing units. And, and that on page seventy-five of your, of your plan, it says that uh, land availability restricted amount of property available for development. So I didn't quite understand the contrast here.
Sure. So what I am saying in this comment is that based on how much property and how many units per lot or units per acre are allowed in the city's zoning and uh, regulations as proposed, we are meeting this requirement to say so many units for various economic levels, there has to be room for them to be built. Yes, we have, we know we have enough room for them to be built. No, they're not built yet. And no, they're not going to all be single-family detached. There's going to be apartments or other types of attached housing built to satisfy uh, the types of uh, different economic levels, uh, what they need. So a, a permanent supportive housing unit for someone that makes zero to thirty percent of area median income, likely you're talking about someone with physical and or mental disability, unable to support themselves. They're on subsidies, um, subsidies for all costs and they have permanent support. Hence the name of the type of housing there to deal with life skills as well as their housing unit. That's not going to be a single-family detached type of product. That's going to be um, multiplex of some kind or an apartment. So what this statement is saying is that given the number of types of units that need to be built at each economic level, there is enough land identified for that type of development uh, in the twenty-four draft plan. Does that make sense?
I think so. Mr. Larson.
I wonder what the reasoning is to require the three additional zones. Be, and I'd like to think we want to submit that question and have a discussion about it, not in, in depth here. But uh, it seems to me that fewer zones with more flexibility is really better. Uh, that way you mix densities and you get a more balanced uh, sort of neighborhoods. And uh, and by, by creating zones where they have to be um, a greater density and a greater density and greater density is kind of old thinking. And uh, I think we need to consider that.
Mr. Herr.
Ms. Spear, can you back up two slides, please? I think it's two. The one that has the red circles on it.
Oh, okay.
So looking at this, that your delta down here on the bottom, total housing unit capacity at ten, I believe that's two forty-two.
Yes.
And then unit capacity with the draft action plan. Is that, are we bridging that gap by the, the ADU question and that designation? Or is that also planned future development? Because it, and I'm asking for the clarity because in, in past discussion in here, it seemed like we were kind of trending in the direction of we have a delta that we've not been able to capture yet. And this slide actually makes it sound like we've bridged that gap and we're in a good place. Am I misreading this?
I will try to answer this. Tell me if I've gotten off track. I will try to answer this. Tell me if I've gotten off track and I'm not answering you. What this is showing you is not how many units are on the ground now. It's not, um, what will have to be built, it is what could be built.
Correct.
So in gray, that 10,242, looking at the current land use designations and zones, you see it broken down in that gray column all the way down, the number of units that could be built in those areas. Compare that to the green column where we've added in now, we have to do so many middle housing units or ADUs per lot. Um, and so you see like, for instance, in R3, there's now a capacity of 3,431 units in that zone because of the middle housing units. Uh, you do actually lose some, some types of units because of the densification, but you have 3,462 units that weren't possible before given zoning. The zoning change to accommodate middle housing in the single family areas results in that many more units that could happen in R3. Does that?
You did, you did clarify. Thank you. And then there's the, the last column specifically lines out the ADU question. So you, you did clarify. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Keep going?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, these are the subareas. You know them well, but what you see down on the bottom is where the change is proposed for this time. The incorporation of Woodbrook into the new Tillicum-Woodbrook SubArea Plan. Uh, looking at just the physical document of the comp plan right now versus 2024, uh, about 254 pages right now, it's being cut down to about 130. But there are more elements in order to reflect, uh, a little more efficient organization to reflect state law. And then you have the three subarea plans, two of which are, uh, needing some change to be up to date. Uh, versus where we have three updated subarea plans in 24. And then we also have a number of appendices that will include some of the narrative and background documentation that is in the current comp plan. We're going to take it out. So the plan itself is goals and policies for people to be able to easily read. And the background and the, the narrative is going to be in, uh, the appendices. So kind of dry stuff, but at the same time, it's going to really change the way the comprehensive plan looks and flows. So these are the two, uh, tables of contents compared. Uh, and I just wanted to bring this forward to you to explain, I think I did this last time, but just to clarify again, some of the elements have the same name, but that doesn't mean they say the same thing anymore. There are, um, policies that are new, there's policies that are gone, and there are edited policies, if you were to compare 24 with 23. And the numbering has changed. So please don't assume policy 1.1 reads the same and, um, is the same one as policy 1.1 in the other document. It, they have changed and moved around in many cases. And so that is where, uh, I'm recommending you spend your time is on the audit tables. That shows you the relationship between the old and the new. It gives you the new number. If, if there are edits to language, why that's being suggested. But just again, it's a different number of chapters, changed policy content and also changed policy organization. So this is, uh, land use, just showing you again what I just mentioned. The original policy, whether it is there or not, if there isn't an existing policy that's being changed, it'll say new. Uh, but if we go down here to single family under 232, this is the current language in the city's comprehensive plan. There's a change being proposed and here's in the middle explaining why. So this is a change to the single family designation to, um, comply with what we've been talking about, the middle housing requirements. And here is draft language that would be in the new plan to talk about this residential low designation. And it talks about not only single family in this zone, but also smaller scale multifamily, so that middle housing option. And so there's many, many policies, there's many, many ones of these pages of your audit. But this is where I would spend my time, if I were you, to try to see where you may have questions or concerns or a desire to add or change. Capital facilities, kind of the same thing. And I will send you this PowerPoint tomorrow because what I tried to do with it is pull out, uh, the specific uh, policy changes that are, uh, substantively different. So some of them are like, we're rewriting it because this was poorly written. Or we've taken it out because it's obsolete, that, that project was completed 10 years ago. Or, um, this needs to go away because state law no longer allows us to say this. There's that kind of thing. And then there's also the editing for grammar and spelling and, and repetitiveness. If there's, there is some duplication of language and policies right now that we're taking out. But if you look at the rationale for the change and then the final language, that, that's where to focus your time because this is quite a bit, obviously, to digest. Capital facilities, economic development, um, there's quite a bit of change in the economic development audit. Uh, because, or the economic development element because we've taken a lot of the narrative out and moved it into an appendix. So this again will look significantly different and, uh, really focus on just the goals and the policies that the city has right now with a couple that are proposed for, uh, improvement. Energy and climate change, I mentioned before, this has been in place as a voluntary or, or optional element for a couple of years in Lakewood. Now there's some state requirements that we're needing to comply with. Uh, and we're also fleshing out some of the policies because of that steering committee that met last year and had feedback and recommendations to the city. So the final goal policy language is not just state tells us we have to do it. This also does reflect, uh, community input, uh, from last year. Housing, we've talked about this a lot. I won't, um, bore you with talking about it again. But you do see additional policies to reflect all of these changes that are now required with the new targets, planning for various area median incomes, et cetera. Uh, there's also talking about equity and inclusion. If you remember when we went through the housing needs assessment a few months ago, that showed where people live right now, whether they rent, whether they own, what their race is, what their economic level is. Some of that has now been brought into the goals to say things like encouraging preservation of housing and also expansion of housing options for lower income residents. That's something that's, um, being changed for, uh, old versus new comprehensive plan. Military compatibility is a new element altogether. Uh, the city is obviously very closely, uh, partnered with Joint Base Lewis McCord, but this is just to reflect that even more so in the city's comprehensive plan. So there's goals and policies there that are new. Public service, um, taking just some pieces and splitting them off into a, a new policy to recognize that the city is doing an ADA or American with Disabilities Act transition plan, uh, that's underway right now with our Public Works Department. Subareas, this is not the actual subarea plans, this is an element to say we have them. And so this is talking about the various goals that are been included over time in the city to say we want subarea focus in places X, Y, and Z. Transportation, we've talked about this a lot as well. There's, uh, again, that ADA discussion, but there's also, um, talking about edits for clarity, taking away duplicative language, looking at, um, the levels of service in the city and whether or not they need to be changed, given projected transportation, um, pattern changes. So going back to those subarea plans and the number of jobs and the number of housing units in station district and downtown, that is where more traffic would be concentrated, should that all be successful. And so there's actually projections now in some of the other parts of the city that transportation pressures would go down. And in other places it'll go up because of the different way people are moving around in the city over time. So that's, um, some of, looking at the levels of service and making sure that they still make sense as they're currently adopted. Urban design is, uh, to me, kind of an odd element, but it's basically to say you need to plan everything together as a city and try to make logical decisions as to what type of land use goes where. So just making some updates to that, uh, taking older elements and rewriting them, reorganizing them. And then implementation basically is a whole new, uh, version. We have this in our current plan, but it's very outdated and unclear, if I could just be blunt about it. This is trying to really clarify, A, what's the timeframe to implement things? B, which part of the city or which outside utility or partner is responsible for helping to implement, uh, various goals or priorities? Quite a few of those. I'm not going to go through them all.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Wallace has a question.
I just, I want to ask, I was thinking a lot about this development and I'm trying to understand where that fits in. Uh, where do you put businesses that make things that we could improve the job creation? Is there a section in here that kind of addresses that or am I supposed to kind of interpolate that based on the data that's been provided?
Are you talking about manufacturing type things? There are land uses or there are zones within the city that specifically allow manufacturing uses.
And is there a, a plan to, as part of that, well, there'd be, just from, again, my information, to encourage those businesses here? Is there some policy or way we do that so that they, how, how does that work?
Uh, that is the economic development program for the city. So there's the element in the company as a plan, and then we have staff specifically dedicated to, um, economic development. Uh, so if you remember Becky Newton, who was here to talk about the MFTE program, she's our economic development manager. And, uh, she and another person in the city, that is what they do.
Okay. And so then they're looking for those and where they would fit in and what sites in here, so we don't, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they have a great big focus on not only, uh, bringing new businesses in, but also retaining and improving the experience for the existing businesses in the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on all of the elements and what's in those, um, uh, different elements? I, I don't want to cut you off. So if there's any questions about any of these stuff that's been in front of you for the last week or so, any of those elements, you want to raise something specific, could do it now, could do it later.
My only question was, you said you're going to send us that PowerPoint on this. Uh, so that wasn't included, this is not included in the plan now. I thought I was reading the same thing. It's already in.
All of this is in the document you have, but what I've done here is just try to take out the ones that are the most substantive changes. So if, if you're trying to really focus your effort and minimize, um, reading and reading and reading, I'm, I'm trying to provide you a tool to do that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Cherry, I have one question. Ms. Spear, uh, so, I don't know, in the last couple of minutes, I want to be very careful about how I word this, but you referenced, uh, changes and I think you said equity.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, did you also include the word diversity?
Yes.
In that statement?
Yes.
Okay. So anywhere in this plan, and I haven't seen it, but I just want to bluntly ask, are, are we driving housing decisions based on div- diversity considerations? Or is, is it really centered around equity in the income generation where, where we're in that column, right? Obviously that's a huge consideration for what we're, we're discussing here. Um, but are we talking about limiting or opening certain areas of housing up based on racial status? Is that part of this plan?
Hmm. Not exactly like you just asked it. So let me, let me give you a much, a much longer answer than that. Um, yes, absolutely. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are central to the 2024 comprehensive plan process. Um, the city has, and all of the jurisdictions involved have been tasked with looking at where historically people of particular races or particular incomes have been located, uh, either by choice or by redlining in some situations. Um, Tacoma has a history of specifically redlining where people could buy or not buy based on race. Because Lakewood is a younger city, it doesn't have that history. However, there are, um, now documented parcels and developments that were built in Lakewood where that was conditions. You could not buy, uh, and live in a place, if you were not white, you could be the chauffeur, but you couldn't own the property. That was language that was in CCNRs, et cetera.
Right.
Fast forward to today, we still have those historical patterns. So there are parts of the city that are more racially diverse, less white, more people of color. And, um, the trend in those areas is a lower economic level. What is now being asked of Lakewood is to say, okay, given that reality, what can we do as a jurisdiction to, A, try to encourage jobs in this area for these people to be able to have more economic opportunity, to be able to move up? B, what can we do to, um, bring more types of housing that might be more affordable than the single family detached version? So people of lower economic means have more choices of where they can live? How do we try to make sure that the, in some cases, stark racial, uh, location in the city can be more blended? So forgive me, I'm going to be really blunt here, west side of the city, older neighborhoods, wealthier people, that is where there are more white people, uh, maybe more Asian people. In some of the, uh, poorer parts of town, much higher population of Hispanic and black. How do we get those populations to be able to better blend when choosing where they can live? That's part of what the city's been asked to do. The, um, related piece to that is somewhat counterintuitive in some cases, which is you're supposed to also preserve existing affordable housing. And so within Lakewood, some of those areas where some of those, the poorer people do live is where the more affordable housing is located, hence that's why they're there. And how do we preserve that while redeveloping, encouraging economic development, encouraging new housing units to come into the city? So that is a, a kernel of, um, debate for you as a planning commission and also for the city council.
So just a blunt question.
Yeah.
Right? If I had this PDF and sitting in front of me, you know, and I'm control searching, right? Control F. Um, would I find any places where I am either limiting or encouraging diversification of an area based on race? Like, a- a- and so as an example, are, are there going to be places in this policy or in this plan, this comp plan update that say these opportunities are only available for BIPOC residents of the, this municipality?
Absolutely not. That's illegal. It has been since 1969.
Just, that's, just, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah. No, not at all. The intent is to allow more opportunity for historically discriminated populations. And those tend to be people of color. But the, the way the rules are being changed now is to just allow opportunity. Anybody and everybody can do anything and go anywhere. Not you have to do it here, you can't do it there.
Right.
And certainly not by race.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
So if there's no other questions about specific items tonight, I'm, again, I don't want to cut you off if there are. But the other parts to cover, uh, this evening at a, a much faster pace is in the station district subarea plan. Some of you will remember reference to Lakewood Landing. That was a project that was supposed to be about 30 acres. It was going to be a big mixed use type of development near the base, hence its name, Lakewood Landing. It had like a mascot of a plane. It was going to be this great thing that tied the base and its population and families over into the city, et cetera. Uh, the idea there was to have up to 760 housing units and quite a bit of employment. And so that was part of the planning within the station district subarea. Fast forward, since this plan was adopted, the middle parcel of those 30 acres was purchased by a developer and is now being used for a micro fulfillment center and a last mile delivery, which is very different from what Lakewood Landing was ever intended to be. So what we have done is just simply remove the references to Lakewood Landing out of the subarea plan. That's the only change right now proposed for station district. So going back to your question from earlier this evening, Mr. Larson, when the time comes to take action, if you want to say in addition to these changes, talk about adding, uh, Springbrook into the station district subarea, you, you could add that as, as something for council to consider. The Tillicum-Woodbrook SubArea Plan, again, we've talked about this already this evening, but the idea first and foremost is to add Woodbrook into this. The idea behind that was the people who live in Tillicum and Woodbrook, yes, they're in different communities. Yes, they're, um, split by I-5, but they both feel a common sense of isolation from the rest of the city. And they do interact with each other more so than they do with other parts of the city. Um, while there has been quite a bit of industrial zoning happening in, in Woodbrook, so it is very different in, in terms of land use planning from Tillicum, there are still people who live in Woodbrook. And they were involved in the planning, uh, or creation of this new subarea plan. So, uh, some of what you'll see is the goals and priorities, uh, were informed by people from both, both parts of the city there. The goals, there are six. Um, and, uh, celebrating the, basically the public amenities there, the community center, the school, the park, and the library. Uh, increasing visibility of their diverse community and diverse is not only racial, but it's, uh, a walk of life, age, um, all kinds of different meanings to that word. Increasing and diversifying housing options within Tillicum and Woodbrook. Connecting to Tillicum and Woodbrook to Lakewood better than it is now. It's basically you have to get on I-5 to get to the rest of the city. Looking at increasing economic development opportunities. So maybe some of what Mr. Combs was talking about earlier this evening was actually a goal they identified themselves. And then looking at, um, air quality and climate change in that part of the city because, um, obviously with I-5 right there, air quality. because obviously with I-5 right there, air quality is affected by transportation. And then you also have Joint Base Lewis McCord in the near vicinity as well. So airplane type of effect on air quality as well. So that will be coming in front of you as, also as part of all of your public hearing process.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Quick question. There in the Woodbrook area, homes versus the industrial complexes we have there, on which segment do we get more taxes?
Which segment, what?
Do we get more taxes?
Oh, it's going to be from the industrial area. The, the people that live there are in mobile home parks, if not exclusively for the most part. And that is another sense of isolation, that, that recent rezoning happened by the city council, and they feel even more ignored, is basically the quote that came from one of the meetings. So trying to recognize that they are residents of the city is partly why they were incorporated into the subarea.
Okay, Mr. Combs.
How many people representing the Woodbrook neighborhood in the planning?
We had one person who was a neighborhood association. I don't know if he was the chair, but he was a member. And then we also had a business owner from Woodbrook involved. So we tried to get a residential and then a commercial viewpoint.
I, I, you know, from the neighborhood planning that I heard going on for the subarea plan, I understood there was one representative who was representing residential, and they don't even live in, in Woodbrook anymore. They live outside of the city, but come back and advocate for it. And that's why I don't know that there is an overwhelming need to have them connected, and that, that is why I see a disparity. We're making a recommendation to add it without, I, I, I still don't see the uses with the zoning change. And I get that if the city made a mistake and zoned that way, and, and now we're trying to make it right by adding it back in. But they're conflicting uses, one's a residential neighborhood and the other one is predominantly industrial. And they, they're, they do not align with neighborhood. You may have some residents in there, but I, they're, they're, they just, if, if we're looking at the zoning alone, they just don't connect, and geographically they don't align. So to make the recommendation to have in there, I guess I would just need to understand a little bit more, what, what other motivation could we have to make it make sense to do something that's a conflicting zone, that's geographically separated, other than a couple people or one person who is not here anymore? The business is just going to be there to participate if they're invited. The, the, I'm familiar with that area, I spent a lot of time there. And I, I do not see a lot of activity or whatever from that group, more so from the Tillicum side. So that's why I'm, I'm kind of perplexed when I hear about it, and it doesn't line up with what I've been hearing from the people who've been involved with the neighborhood plan, so, subarea plan.
Well, one thing I would ask you to think about is, this is not proposing to rezone anything in either part of the subarea plan, first of all. It is expanding the geography, the boundaries of the subarea plan to include the businesses and the people that still live in Woodbrook to be part of a subarea at the far south end of the city. If you were to look, though, at the Lakewood Station District area, there's a number of different types of zones there. It's not all residential, it's not all commercial, there's multiple types. So the fact that you've got the industrial in Woodbrook but not in Tillicum, or the residential in Tillicum you don't have in Woodbrook, I wouldn't say that's a fatal flaw of a subarea plan. It is more, and obviously they're not the same, but it's more like the Lakewood Station District where you have a number of different things, but it's all being planned as a subset of the city.
Mr. Larson?
It feels to me that what we're really lacking is a separation in definition within the now expanded subarea plan. Because it's really clear that everything in the Woodbrook area is not the same as Tillicum. It is not. There's no industry in Tillicum, there's, there's no water in Woodbrook, and on and on. But I can see if, if there's a reason to be inclusive in terms of making it part of, of the whole land area, that as long as it has a separate definition for the land use within it, so that nobody's making an inappropriate assumption that because, that there's commonality. Because in this case, you just don't have the commonality. And that's plain as, as our faces. But at the same time, there might be a reason from an organizational standpoint to have it together. But from a land use standpoint, we don't see it. So how do you, i- i- is that something that's in the, the process for the addition of Woodbrook into the?
I would, I would say the thought process was, if what we're trying to do is address concerns of isolation, it does not make sense to have Woodbrook not involved in some type of subarea planning. Right? Because it is even more isolated than Tillicum, it's across I-5 as well. So bringing those two together into us, into the same subarea, yes, there's quite a variety of land uses, but that, it's that sense of how do we get transportation options improved for those two parts of the city? How do we improve other types of uses available to them, like a grocery store in that part of the city? Those kinds of things that were common interest, and just the location of the two next to each other.
So support for what's there?
Yeah, there's no, there's no proposed change to land use.
Being part of the city from an operational standpoint.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that does make some sense.
We look at the goals, the, they center around community.
Yeah.
So we're talking about community, community, not community commercial.
I, I agree.
I won't go into critical areas tonight. We've obviously talked at great length this evening, and my brain's hot, I don't know about yours. But we'll talk regulation next time. But in the meantime, if you have any questions, or if you already have in your head, you would like to propose an edit, if you could send that to me and Karen, I can start to track that. So as we start to move through the public hearing and then the after, the meetings after that, we can kind of have a running list of the ideas coming from each of you, as well as what may come out of the public hearing for potential amendments.
We all have individual ideas that we can propose to, or Mr. Tiffany too, and it can be addressed to all of us, and we can go by, one by one. Okay, it's good.
All right.
Our next meeting is the 13th, you say?
Yeah, so the Joint Planning Commission City Council meeting is on Monday night, May 13th. That starts at 7:00 PM. You're welcome to attend in person or remotely if you can make it. The nature of those discussions is the, it's a study session. The city council sits down and it's semi-circular setup, and they invite members of whatever board or commission they're talking to up with them. Usually it's a review of the status of your yearly work plan. So what have you accomplished to date, what's still to come in this year? But also specific items of interest. So I would assume that this will obviously be a big topic where the council's asking you how, how this process is going, what your thoughts are. They may also bring up the RTA or the MFTE question. You may bring it up to them if you want more direction from the council, since they've sent it back to you now to hold another public hearing. Or if there's other topics that you want to be talking about with them, that's the time to do it. The conversation can go anywhere from a 10 minutes to half an hour to whatever, back and forth with the dialogue. So that'll be the 13th. The 15th will be back here, and we'll talk regulations. Unless you want to not do it on the 15th and do it a different day. I won't complicate things yet. I did, and I think all of you saw, cancel as of now, May 29th. Because we went through the policy stuff tonight, the regulations are two weeks from now, and then you would be following that on June 5th with your public hearing. If you do want that third meeting put back on the schedule, more than happy to do it. I was just thinking, maybe it wouldn't be needed, but if you feel differently, please let me know.
I have a comment on that. So the 13th is, is our charge meeting, I'm not going to be available, so Mr. Combs will take the helm on that. And he's working with Spear, too, she has a outline, so for us to follow. Number one, number two, 15, y'all want to come back two days later? Or shall we move it to the 29th?
Correct me if I'm wrong, that's coming right off the holiday weekend, right? The 29th?
29th.
The 27th is Memorial Day, so it's two days later, yeah.
I mean, I'm fine coming back on the 15th, but also I can walk here from my house.
Does anybody, Mr. Larson?
I will not be here on the 29th.
Okay.
And if we can afford the, the, the time, then coming back two days later, I'd vote to not do that.
I mean, you prefer not to come back on the 15th, and therefore?
Come back, not on the 15th.
Okay, but then you were not going to be available on the 29th either.
And I'm not available on the 13th.
But, but to not be here on the 15th, I'm not really strong about that, I just prefer it, but, but the 29th, I'm definitely gone.
Okay, and 29th is, just like 29th is not a good day anyway?
Can we fit it all in on the 5th? I mean, if we're meeting here on the 13th, can we reconvene June 6th? Then is that too much for one agenda?
Well, what you have right now is the 13th and then the 15th, and then June 5th would be your public hearing. So unless you want to add in another date before the public hearing, you would have one more study session, testimony, and then we start in with your study sessions after the public hearing, however many you may want.
Let's make it kind of tight.
But what I'm hearing is that no meeting on the 29th regardless. So 13th, whoever can come, great, 15th would be our next regularly scheduled meeting, and then June 5th is the public hearing.
Okay, you all good with that, Mr. Larson?
In a way, having that public hearing ahead of when we have our organizational head scratching meeting would be valuable, because we'd have the input from the public, hopefully, at that time, and we'd be able to do a more comprehensive job of our, of our work.
So the question, however, is, can, do we have all the information prior to the public hearing? Or do we need another meeting in order to get more information prior to the hearing? And then, yes, the week after or the meeting after will do our discussions as such, therefore we do a vote. So that's the question, do we?
In other words, are you okay with one more meeting? Or do you want two more meetings before your public hearing?
Yes. 15th is one.
What about on the 13th, just meeting an hour before or something like that? Or is that something that?
We would have to look if there was a room available on Monday night, that's right before council. I know there's at least one other committee that meets in the city, but let me check. Is that something that would be of interest to people?
Can you all make it earlier as per, no, no?
You're gone that night.
Yeah, I'm gone the 13th.
Yeah, you're gone the 13th either way.
So my, so two of us are gone, and five of you can make it. One, two, three.
I can do it, if, if there's a room available.
The other thing we could do is have a meeting just virtual. So on the 13th, instead of being here an hour early if there's not a room available, we could do a virtual meeting.
I'll be on an airplane.
I'm sorry?
I'll be on an airplane, so I can't make it.
Mr. Combs, you have it on the 13th, and you want to have a meeting prior to, but if we can have a room, is that what you're saying? So you only have one hour to discuss 540 pages.
Yeah. I, I think that just means we got to do more homework between now and then.
And, and let me make it clear, that's just the policies you guys have. You don't have the regulations yet, so you got more coming, so.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm okay with us also meeting on the 15th, but I'm also okay if you wanted to send like a doodle poll.
Sure, we can do that.
To gauge our availability for either.
Okay.
So most of us will be available on the 15th.
What I will do is just, that will be a meeting, that's our regularly scheduled third Wednesday of the month, so that will be a planning commission meeting. The question I'm hearing is whether or not to meet either on the 13th before the Joint Planning Commission, or if that doesn't work for whatever reason, also looking for a separate special day.
Meeting on the 15th, I would, I don't want a meeting on the 13th.
Okay.
In addition to that, I'm not try, I'm not trying to create meetings, I'm trying to eliminate them.
Okay.
All right, 13th and 15th.
Okay, so we're back to where we were without the 29th.
Not 29th.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order from, from us all?
Just a quick question. When do you need comments back by so that we kind of have an idea for deadline on, on the comp plan draft?
I will ask for, first of all, I would encourage, anything that pops in your mind in the middle of the night, get it to me the next day, so it's not all coming in at once. That would just make it easier for everybody involved. Secondly, the deadline to get me suggested amendments, I would request it by June 10th. Because what that would do is let you get through the public hearing and hear all of that. You will have had the materials for a little over a month, and it will be the time on the 12th where you have your study session to kind of chew on if you want to make any changes. So if you could get me your comments by the 10th, I will be able to compile a list of, this is what I've heard from all of the commissioners, and you can look at those, and then if there's others you want to bring up on the 12th, that works. All right?
Okay, and because of publicity and notifications that are going to be sent out, we expect cash of thousands here for?
It'll be, it'll be massive, I'll tell you.
Maybe double tonight?
Mr. Go.
Could be.
Could I ask for an email with that in there? A June 10th deadline, here's a link to everything? Just so we have, like, we're all on the same page and we are held accountable.
Absolutely.
One last, go on, last question. The question that came up is, why are we being asked to respond only to Ms. Deveraux regarding our attendance and not all? Ms. Deveraux, why do we only respond only to you and not all?
Replying all equals a meeting. And per Open Public Meetings Act, that's not allowed without public notice and the ability for people to be there. So if you reply all to any of the communication that comes from Ms. Deveraux or myself, we're violating Open Public Meetings Act in theory, and, well, technically we are. So the request is to just do those direct responses back to Karen as clerk for the commission, so she's tracking attendance and whatever else in order to do this the way Robert rules of order and Open Public Meetings Act requires.
Thank you. Any other comments to the order of the order? No, Ms. Spear?
Nothing else for me.
Nothing else? Okay, a, their meeting closed, thank you.